Did y'all get the email I sent out yesterday with Rachel's packet? Okay. Alright, I think everybody's in. It's not popping up with anymore, so I think we're good.
Okay, I'm gonna start, call the meeting room, and start with pledge allegiance.
Mottler, Graylove, Brady, TZ, Gilbertson.
Prove agenda. I move to approve with the slight amendment that, let's see, the emergency manager, director, lane report is be set to ten, ten, and treasurer, Roger Howes, report, so we set to ten fifteen.
Second.
Kevin, did you want to add Missy? Or Kendall? Okay. So motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion passes, approve minutes?
Motion approve minutes.
Yeah, I just, it's very minor, but I saw somewhere in here, we had a, a motion by Brad.
Oh, Brady, yeah, okay, I will look at that and put that Y on there, I'm sorry.
Very, very minimal, but I just have to. Yeah, so I second, second approval of minutes.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All same sign, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard? Hearing none, Rachel, can you hear us? We can't hear you. No, nothing yet.
She's on mute though, you can see that.
Right.
Is our volume turned up? Yeah, it is. Still can't hear you, Rachel.
Now she's muted, she wasn't.
Oh my gosh, can you hear me? I promise you, this is not my first Zoom meeting. Alright, um, thank you, everybody, for having me, good to see you guys virtually. I'm gonna pull up my screen here, and make sure you guys can see, that's not it. Let's do my PowerPoint here. Okay, can you guys see, it should say policy overview?
There we go.
Perfect, okay, so I will put this in presenter mode to make it a little bigger here. Alright, so, today should be pretty short and sweet. Everything is either, or I should say, everything besides medical is either in a rate guarantee, meaning that the rates do not renew for a couple of years, or they renew, but you're actually getting a rate pass, so no change in the rates. So, again, really, medical is the, the main talking point here. When I look at your total rewards program, and compare it to similar sized employers in our area, you know, I think that you guys have a very robust offering, you have Aflac for the cancer, critical illness, hospital accident, which is wonderful. If anything, the only gap that I see is long-term disability. So, I did quote, an employer paid and an employee paid long-term disability, if that's something you guys are interested in looking at. If we progress here to some benchmarking information, so this is our MMA Dakota's benchmarking. So this is going to include employers, or clients of ours, that are in, you know, the Sioux Falls area. And this is looking at plan design specifically. I also have premium and cost share benchmarking as well, that we'll get to. But on average, employers are offering between two to three medical plans. The average deductible for your co-pay plan is two thousand two hundred and fifty. You know, sixty percent or more offer more than one plan designed. I would say a fair amount of them, if they have a second plan designed, it's a high deductible health plan. Individual out-of-pocket max, on average, is two to four thousand dollars, average co-pay twenty-five dollars. Specialty physician co-pay is twenty to thirty dollars. So the whole point in all of this is to show you, you know, where your plan stacks up compared to others in our area. So this is looking at high deductible health plan benchmarks, you obviously don't have one. In the event that you wanted to implement a high deductible health plan, I would recommend kind of around that thirty-five hundred or four thousand dollar deductible. And there's different options there, you know, where you can have a co-insurance layer, meaning, let's say my deductible is thirty-five hundred, but my out-of-pocket max for individual is forty-two hundred. So, you know, I'm on the hook for the first thirty-five hundred, then I have that co-insurance layer there, once I hit it, everything's covered at a hundred percent. So that's kind of how that high deductible health plan works. The main attraction for employees and/or employers is the high deductible health plan allows for employees to have a health savings account, which is a triple tax benefit, and can be treated like a savings vehicle. So, this is benchmarking for premium. You guys are obviously leading the market with your contribution towards premium. What this is showing here at the top, so for every little dot, that's where a client's contribution or their employee premium lands. So, our average employee-only monthly cost is one fifty-seven per month. Your employees pay zero, so you're obviously leading the charge there. And then from a family monthly premium, the average is nine sixteen, and your employees pay eight hundred and fifty-five, so again, you're well within that benchmark, right between the twentieth percentile and the average. Any questions on the benchmarking information?
So, what's the pool that we're benchmarking from? So is this all other counties, or all governmental agencies, or is there private industry in this as well?
Good question, so this is our agency's book of business. So it's gonna include public and private employers, you know, anywhere from two employees to five hundred. So you are kind of just in the general population here.
Which is good, because that's who we're competing with for employees, so.
Exactly, yep, exactly. Alright, so, for Wellmark, Wellmark provided a four-point-two-three percent increase this year on premiums. You'll notice here, the claims information is very limited based on your enrollment. But what we do know is, the prior year, your total claims were about one-point-three million dollars. The current year, they're up, they're closer to one-point-six, one-point-seven million, so your claims have increased a little bit. When I look at this Wellmark underwriting workbook, here's kind of how Wellmark gets to that four-point-two-three percent. So Wellmark's pool of fifty-one to one-hundred, which is where Clay County lands, they added a base rate increase of one percent. So their pool is running really, really well for Wellmark, and you guys, in this case, are actually benefiting significantly from Wellmark's pool. So, everybody's in this market, in this fifty-one, one-hundred, starts at a one percent. From there, they're going to look at your group-specific underwriting considerations, and they added a seven-point-two-one percent to that. Demographic-wise, you did get a decrease of four and a half points because of your demographics. So again, that's age, gender, contract type. Contract type is gonna be like, in, how many you have in your employee, employee plus spouse, employee plus children, and family. And then planned value was just neutral credit, family composition, they did put a ding of point-nine-eight percent, which is, you know, immaterial there. No adjustment for group size, PPO network utilization, they gave a negative point-ten percent credit there. So overall blended, that's where they get to that four-point-two-three. So, the actual base rate for, you know, the fifty-one to one-hundred size groups for Wellmark was a one percent. However, I will tell you that medical trend is running more like seven to eight percent. Pharmacy trend right now is fifteen percent. So, the four-point-two-three is very favorable. In my opinion, this is a great renewal, considering some of the others that I've seen this past year.
I had a question, Rachel, I didn't find that particular page in my, in the packet you provided, is that something you can share with us? It's, it's helpful that, you know, what, what weight, you know, yeah.
Yep, absolutely, I just pulled it this morning and stuck it in here, so we'll get you the updated version.
Thank you.
You bet. Alright, so here is what your current plan looks like, so the fifteen-hundred-dollar co-pay. Again, I shared earlier, our average deductible for a co-pay plan, you are well under that. For a primary care co-pay, twenty-five to thirty, that's right in alignment. The specialist co-pay, I think, was like thirty to sixty, so you're right in alignment there. So, here are, at the bottom, the current rates and your renewal rates. And then here's a breakdown of how many contracts you have of each. So you have thirty single contracts, six employee plus spouse, seven employee plus children, and four family contracts. And then total premium here, as well as for monthly and annual. Just keep in mind that this is total premium, this is not Clay County or the employees' cost share, which I do have more to come there on the next slide. We did want to provide an alternate, in the event that, you know, four-point-two-three is outside of what you budgeted, or there's other considerations this year. You could increase your deductible by five hundred dollars for the individual to two thousand. Your co-pays do go up a hair, obviously the out-of-pocket max goes up, co-insurance stays the same, and the prescriptions do take an increase as well, but with that, it would be a negative three-point-three-six from the current rates. And then we also did quote a high deductible health plan as well. This is a true high deductible health plan, meaning the deductible and the out-of-pocket max are the same. So how this plan works is, I as the employee, am on the hook for the first thirty-five hundred dollars. After that, everything's covered at a hundred percent by the carrier. Any questions on this?
So, at, at the, when, when you're comparing the three plans, so were we to have all of our policies under the, the first option that we have now, we're gonna see a four-point-two-three percent increase? If we had all of our policies under, say, the third, like, alternate two, we would see a negative one-point-three-six? Is that correct?
You got it, yep, you got it.
As an option, we wouldn't see that level of savings, right? We would see something less than four-point-two.
Correct.
Right?
Yep, correct.
Decided to go with that plan, right?
Yeah, and in this scenario, you know, I would never recommend that you offer a fifteen-hundred-dollar co-pay and a two-thousand co-pay. You know, if you wanted to offer a second plan, I would say, let's either go the high deductible route, or, you know, let's look at like a, a four-thousand-dollar co-pay, or a third, three-thousand-dollar co-pay for a side-by-side. The high deductible health plan, in my experience, you're gonna see low utilization for the first couple of years, until people start getting experience with it, getting that HSA money built up. It's just that level, level of comfortability. You know, these people are used to having a very rich deductible plan. Right now, you know, when I pick a medical plan, I look at, what is my max risk? And right now, with your co-pay plan, it's three thousand dollars. With the high deductible, I'd actually be taking on more risk by going to that thirty-five-hundred-dollar out-of-pocket max. The perk is that I would obviously save a little bit on premium, but, you know, the biggest perk of all is that health savings account, and taking advantage of those triple tax benefits. So just wanted to share this, you know, I don't think that necessarily my, my recommendation this year is to add a second plan, or to add a high deductible health plan. In my opinion, you add a second plan where there's cost savings associated on a year, where maybe your increase is quite significant, and we need to find a way to cut costs for employees, if that makes sense.
Makes sense to me.
Okay. Any other questions on this one?
Carrie, what?
I budgeted ten percent.
So here is something that I think will be helpful for you, it's very tiny, so if I need to get out of presentation mode and blow it up, I certainly can, can you guys see this?
We have that on our computer, so.
Oh, okay, perfect, so this is our cost and contribution analysis. And what, the purpose of it is to really help you, from a budgeting perspective, look at, okay, we have our current, right, so this left side here, this is your current plans and rates, as well as your breakdown of enrolled. And here is the breakdown between the employer, which is ER, cost share, employee, which is EE. So, what we do then is, we apply the twenty-twenty-five renewal rates, and we just used your fifteen-hundred-dollar deductible. And we assumed the same enrollment. With this, we applied the same contribution, so again, taking a hundred percent of that employee cost, shaving it off of the other tiers, and splitting that fifty-fifty. So in this scenario, you're kind of cost-sharing with the employees, that four-point-three percent increase. And so, if we applied this same contribution, over here is where you'll see the employee cost difference per pay period. So zero for the employee tier, the employee spouse would increase by eighteen ninety-five, the employee children would increase by sixteen fifteen, and the family would increase by thirty-seven forty-one. And then on the far right is the employer monthly difference per tier. And the yellow at the bottom is the cost increase per month for employees versus the county. So annually, if you kept your contribution the same, the increase to the county would be twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars for the year. Any questions on that one? Nope, okay. So that's it for medical. I don't know if you guys want to vote on the medical, and then talk about the rest, or if you want to save it till the end.
We can just wait.
Okay. Okay, so very briefly, here is the long-term disability quote, this is for the employer-paid version. How the long-term disability works is it butts up against your short-term disability policy. So, in the event that somebody exhausts the short-term disability, that's when long-term disability would kick in. And a member could technically receive long-term disability up until social security retirement age. So, how this works is it's sixty percent of their monthly earnings up to five thousand dollars. And, this again, is the employer-paid contribution. It does include employee assistance available, which is three face-to-face sessions per issue. And this would result in a monthly premium of one thousand ninety-two dollars. So this is the employer-paid version again. The voluntary, so meaning employee paid, nothing changes with the plan designs, it still has the EAP. It's still sixty percent of their monthly earnings up to five thousand dollars, but the rates are age-banded. So, you know, if I'm twenty-five to thirty-nine, my rate per ten dollars of covered payroll is going to be that point-one-eight-zero. There are participation requirements, it's typically ten lives, yeah, right here. So the greater of twenty-five percent or ten lives, you know, how employers typically roll out voluntary is that, you know, we're trying something new this year. In the event that we don't meet participation requirements, the, the policy will not be bound, you will not be charged out of your paycheck for it. But that's kind of how we tee it up, in the event that it's voluntary. Any questions on the long-term disability?
I don't seem to be.
I have a question generally to people in offices, the courthouse here, and others, like, is this something that, that there has been interest in, that, or people disappointed that we don't offer any sort of long-term disability plan currently? Something anybody hears any buzz about from anyone?
I've never heard it mentioned, but I think the employees don't tend to question anything unless it's offered.
Yeah, and they've got pretty good insurance already, so, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep. And you guys do have a very, very nice total rewards program. If anything, I like to just provide these numbers. You know, I think about some of the employees, and a lot of people can figure things out short-term. You know, if I blow out my knee, if I don't have short-term disability, or even if I do, right? Like, I've got kind of that sixty percent of my weekly earnings to kind of help me get through it. I may be in the hole a little bit, as far as it's not a full income replacement product. But then I think about long-term, and what would somebody do in that situation where a short-term now exceeds ninety days, and I'm potentially out of work for several years, if not until I'm the age of sixty-five. So that's kind of the intent and the thought process there.
Um, if, if we were to, to sign onto a plan like this, is employee education something that's provided at all? I'm just thinking, you know, certain departments are probably more likely to utilize it, or it might be more beneficial to you, like highway department. But, you know, it's kind of a lot of details here, and it might be not really easy to know exactly what you're gonna pay, so, is that something that's provided?
Yeah, absolutely, I can either do a, a couple of Zoom meetings like this. We also have Brain Shark videos, which are like a voice-over PowerPoint, where the link can get sent out either email or text, it can be, you know, posted to an Intranet site, where it's really just talking about long-term disability one-on-one, but then also, you know, how this specifically works for you. And again, whether it's employer-paid, we talk that up as well, that, you know, this is something that is provided to you by the county. Or if it's voluntary, then we kind of talk through that, you know, if you're considering long-term disability, think about your financial circumstances, short and long-term. Here's how the rates are calculated, and kind of give some examples that way, so we would cater it to whichever route you end up going. Yep. Alright. And then the other lines of coverage, like I said, dental, this actually does not renew until twenty-twenty-six. So, no plan changes or rate changes here. And then the vision also is in a rate guarantee, so no changes there. This is also employee-paid, just like the dental. The base life, this is a no change in the rates. So it also includes a two-year rate guarantee. So no change to the rates for the employer-paid life insurance, which is fifteen thousand dollars. And then the voluntary life insurance, so this is the employee paid, if they wanted to purchase additional supplemental voluntary life. And this also gets a two-year rate guarantee and no change in rates. Short-term disability, this is the employer-funded product. They're giving you a two-year rate guarantee and no change in rates as well, so, all good news there. So ancillary products, you know, no changes to any of that. Medical, that four-point-two-three percent increase, and then, so I just need a decision on the medical, and then the long-term disability. And then if there's anything else you guys want me to go back and, and pull up, I certainly can.
I see a lot of other department heads and folks online there too, so if anybody has any comments that they want to weigh in, is it appropriate for, yeah, to hear from anybody might be interested?
I would just add, I haven't heard any complaints from anyone in my office about the, what's being provided now. The expectation is that, we all understand, at some point, rates are gonna increase to some degree, and I don't think anyone in my office would be surprised or upset at a four percent. I think everyone recognizes that four percent's probably pretty good right now.
Yeah, I think so.
I agree.
Make a motion to accept the medical and. A motion and a second, any further discussion? And just for clarification, Carrie, when we do the deductible, the county kicks in, how much? Just so.
Up to five hundred dollars after they made that first thousand. So if an employee meets twelve hundred dollars, they could get two hundred dollars reimbursed. If they meet the full fifteen hundred, they could get five hundred reimbursed. And it is a one-time, so if you have a family plan, you get that five hundred dollars one time, you don't get it for each person on the plan. And that's per year.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion passes.
Alright. Alright, um, thank you, everybody, have a great day.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thanks, Rachel.
Bye.
Oh, Scott. Can't do the bed opening, yeah.
Okay.
But the Reno Dry Project.
Yeah.
So. Twenty-twenty-three, Reno Dry stopped, knocked on the door, talking about a product they have. They'd been up on campus checking out this product they installed up there, a couple buildings. And they did some testing down here in the basement. I don't know if they ever notice through the wall, where you get that white stuff that leaches through. I never knew what that was, was always kind of concerned about it. So it's just salt that leaches through the masonry over the years, it's wicking up moisture from the ground, even though the ground looks bone-dry in South Dakota right now. It's always leaching up through the, through the masonry, and it comes out in the form of the salt. They, they said they have a product that they install that will stop this process. That seemed a little too good to be true. I was a little worried about the old snake oil salesman type deal. And so, you know, they assured me, no, no, it works, it works. I, I called a courthouse up north, I can't remember which one, in South Dakota that had the system installed. I talked to Brian Lamotion on campus, had it installed, they said it definitely works.
Okay, that was gonna be a question, I guess, so you have talked to, right, folks at facilities, both wanting to.
Yeah, they have it, two buildings on campus, they said it works. Which, I was reluctant, because it's all done with wavelengths, I know.
My grandma was really into this like twenty years ago, and I was like, Grandma, you're nuts, and then I was like, well, maybe you're not nuts, I don't know.
No. I'm an old guy, I don't even understand how you split an atom. How you send rave wavelengths through the air, and it interferes with how this stuff is, how this moisture's whipped up into the masonry, and extends the life of your building, you know? And, after talking to people, other facility managers that say it works, that it's made a difference in their building, the way it smells, and, and getting rid of the damp feeling. I've, guess I've never really heard any complaints about dampness in the building, maybe Carrie has, she's been there a whole lot longer than I have.
Or Lenny in a basement office, maybe.
Yeah, but you can definitely see it, you know, coming through the walls, there's even a little bit right down here, as you go out the door on the right there that, ten years ago, in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, I don't remember which, I cleaned all that off, sealed it, we painted the room, it's, comes right through the ceiling, so. It's definitely a problem, I think it's worth investment.
So I, I didn't see a price page come through.
Twenty thousand.
Okay.
And he's pushing real hard to get it in, he's been pushing real hard since twenty-twenty-three, he's kind of a rammy-jammy salesman type, so, that was another reason I was kind of really reluctant. But now he tells there's gonna be a significant price increase, well, they're going for twenty to forty thousand, I call that a little bit more insignificant. I was kind of thinking about getting this put in next year, but probably should do it this year. I have the funds there for it, I might have to do a little tweaking, and not do something else that I wanted to do, but.
He'll honor that price for.
He'll honor that price until March first or third or something, yeah. And after that, it's gonna go, it's gonna double, so. And like I said, I have the funds for it, I just really hadn't, I was thinking next year, but probably better go ahead and do it this year.
Well, I think especially based on, you had, already, because that was gonna be my first question, was, well, would you reach out to whoever's in charge of East Hall, and it sounds like another courthouse. I think having a few, few different places, say that it's after being installed for several. I think having a few few different places, say that it's after being installed for several years, it's working for him, I'm inclined to support it, but I also, if we've got till March first and others want to do more research, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I I could call, I could call other places, too. I mean, they sold them up in Minnesota, all over the Midwest. I was reading this again this morning. And I got to thinking about how the courthouse in Yankton County was condemned because it was falling to the ground. And that was designed by the same architects as this courthouse. And I always thought, well, maybe, you know, maybe the contractor cut corners on the masonry. Well, maybe it come down to the ground because of this. You know, they're a lot closer to the river, a lot more moisture, et cetera, et cetera, but, you know. It's it's just a thought, but so anyway, if we plan on being here for a longer, much longer, then it's probably worth the investment.
We just invested a lot in this place.
Right. So I'll just bring everybody's attention, you know? So if you see that bill come across, you'd ask, you wonder what in the world is that thing? So anyway, any questions on that?
I agree, the F R, F L R rest is an issue when I've done home inspections for all these years. So I've always addressed inspections in basements, you know, small, much smaller schedule.
Right.
But it is an issue that should be addressed.
Okay.
I was, you know, having not had any context around it, I was wondering if we, if other outfits do this, and if we should reach out to anybody else for a price as well, but I I would inclined to go with the one that's got some proven examples around here, especially with something that's kind of like there are antennas in the ground. I mean, I I think maybe a little bit from somebody might just mean that they they aren't installing it right, I don't know.
Um, I've never researched to see if there's somebody else out there, or if I have, several years ago, and I don't recall it, but but they they pretty much claim they got the in on this thing in the United States. I think they bought whatever, whatever. I think this guy is in Denmark that came up with this. So I did, I did have an interesting phone call two weeks ago from Seattle, Washington, and it was a similar name, and so they want to talk to you about drying out, duh-duh, et cetera, et cetera. I said, that's why I'm kind of dealing with a company called Reynolds Drive. Oh, yeah, that's their mother company. But when I spoke to Reynolds Drive, they never heard of this other company, so.
All right, let's not send them a check.
Anyway. Yeah, so.
Want to do anything, anyone wait?
I think we should move forward. I see the time is a concern of mine.
Yep.
I don't want to drag it till March and then find out.
Yeah, because, you know, and he said there's gonna be a price increase. I thought, okay, well, you know, ten percent or five percent.
One hundred.
Yeah. But anyway, okay, I'll make a few more phone calls out to some other people that have the system. And we'll go forward.
Your cousin or brother Steve for walking through.
Yeah, you know, you pick up on that. Yeah, I get I get called Steve a lot, so I have a brother named Steve, too, so. Um.
So we want a motion to.
Okay, I'll make that motion, move forward.
I'll second.
And that's gonna allow him to purchase.
Yes.
So have motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion passes. Now we can do the bid open. So this is for the entrance replacement project. We've got one from Mark Brothers Construction. For a total of eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-three cents. Walker Construction. They split this up into two modes, one for the south door and one for the east door, so the one amount is forty-six thousand, two forty-four point eight-eight. Get ready, you're gonna do the math for me.
I will, sure.
And the other one is twenty-seven thousand, nine forty-six point five-eight. Eighty-five, what was it?
Eighty-five thousand, seven ninety-five and sixty-three cents. Got seventy-four thousand, one ninety-one, forty-six, that's what you have.
I want L and L Builders. Their bid is eighty-three thousand, four seventy-four. All offers a little bit. And we bid these together, right, not separate? Maybe we didn't, we didn't split out the.
I told him to split it out.
You did tell him to.
I told him to split it out that way. If I don't have enough money to do one, I might have enough money to, if they have enough, I might do two, I might have enough money to do one.
Okay, because I didn't see on March.
Yeah.
If it was split out, you'll, you can look at that.
Yeah, I think a lot of them missed that point.
But, um, L and L did split it out, and there is a difference, you know, the the south door
Yeah.
is forty-three thousand, five hundred. And the east door is thirty-nine thousand, nine seventy-four. So I mean, there's a difference between.
And we've got, i- i- and the larger amount was, uh, the south door for Walker as well, right?
Yeah, the, so the second six, two forty-four was. I believe so, or that was.
Uh, I wasn't looking to award two different bids. I don't know, warding's the right word, because, you know. My preliminary legwork on this, the numbers was coming in, I thought way, a lot lower than this. Below, below that hundred thousand dollar threshold, but let it for this to get more of a realistic idea of what it's gonna cost, so I'm quite honest with you. I might have enough money in my budget to do this in the rental drive.
Do you have enough to do this? What did you have budgeted?
I only budgeted about eighty thousand dollars in that line item this year. So I didn't legwork, talked to some people, those numbers didn't come in that high. So.
But you looked these over.
Okay.
So we can.
Okay. Okay.
And you were thinking you'd maybe pull the rent or dry money out of this?
But I was thinking this was gonna come in lower and I'd have the
Yeah.
some money left over for that project, yeah. It's kind of early in the year to see, am I gonna have money, if some some other line that I can pull out of, you know, like my repairs or something like that. A little early, so what's that?
I was just gonna ask Carrie one round of the building.
I knew you were gonna ask that. I don't have it in front of me. There is some money left, and I think for sure you'd be able to cover the rental drive out of that, so.
I think we will still be able to do both.
Okay.
I think they're gonna need to be done.
Yeah, the entrances, you know, the doors are getting in rough shape, and the entrances themselves are wood, you know, wood on wood, and so, yeah, there's some deterioration there. Gapping and cracks and stuff starting to rot, and so needs to be done. Any other questions on that?
Did you have a start date or anything on there?
No, I just like everything wrapped up by October fifteenth.
Oh, lawnmower discussion.
So the lawnmower we currently have was purchased in twenty twenty-two. Um, three years in, and, um, Travis has just, you know, we trade it every three years, or personally, when every three years, this lawnmower is used here, and it's used by the four-H board also, or fairgrounds, so, you know, we mow this and they mow that. So I gave you an idea on how, on the usage of it, so, um, anyway, the the, uh, the new mower is around eight thousand dollars, and they'll give us thirty-five hundred dollars on the trade-in for this machine, and there was some discussion, uh, between Travis and I about, you know, they would just pass that mower on to the four-H board, to the four-H board or there for them to use or trade it. It's thirty-five hundred dollars on, if we'll get thirty-five hundred dollars for what we traded in.
What, uh, they have a bigger area they're mowing over there, or what's the?
They mow everything.
They mow everything over there.
Yeah, I was just thinking, that seems like they're they're putting a lot more wear on that than.
Probably, they probably, you know.
But when they cut their, we cut their budget, we did the in-kind, if they could use the mower.
Okay, yeah.
That's where that started out.
Is it a kindness to give them a mower if they're in?
There's nothing wrong with the mower.
No.
The only reason they, um, we were looking at it, because he told me you're gonna get your best value, your most trade-in in three years.
Yeah. You know, it's like, it's got like I think a hundred and forty-one hours on it, so, you know, it doesn't get hit real hard, so, you know, the trade-in value is pretty high on it. And.
We don't have to trade.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's not worn out by any means.
It's, you know, we changed the oil and it fixed the flat tires, that's all we've done to sharpen the blades. So, yeah.
Will this one go back, will this one go over to the new facility also at the time?
Yeah, we'll be trailing it back and forth. So we'll see what the what the tool cat can do out there, I don't know. Some areas might be too tight and small to get that in, I'm not sure how that landscape is gonna lay out over there, so I'm not sure, but, yeah, if we need it over there, we'll trailer it over there. So definitely pick up some hours there on it.
This is for another hustler.
What's that?
Traded for another hustler?
Yeah, because we have the, we have a mulching kit we put on this one in the fall, mulch those leaves up, so, yeah, we'd stay with the same.
I didn't even look, is this a sixty?
Sixty, I believe, sixty-inch. We looked at going up in size, but things just too tight around here, so it wouldn't work if we went larger to be able to cover the L E, new L E C, you know, quicker, but with that tool cat and that mower on the front of it, hopefully we can get bulk of that knocked out over there, out there.
It's a decent amount for a trade.
What's that?
That's a decent amount for a trade, I think.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised.
Cheap for five thousand. Yeah.
Yeah.
Does it work all right to share it?
Yeah, I haven't any trails so far. Yeah, comes back dirty once in a while on flat tires, but.
But now it's gonna be moved a little more often.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna. Three places.
Yeah.
So it might be better to keep it, go to the fair board, spread it between two more. I'll work three places.
So you're thinking purchase a few more and then have two orders, no more is total in our fleet.
Current one.
Hold on to this.
Donate that to the fair board.
Okay.
Donate or transfer to the fair board.
Yeah.
Purchase. Courthouse in Public Safety Center. I think before we do that, you want to talk to Missy and make sure they want it?
Okay.
I was. Okay, I can bring that up. I mean, a hundred and forty-one hours, it's, you know, it lasts them.
Yep, a while.
A long, long time.
What I'm thinking, you know, maybe if that's the route we're gonna go, then maybe that's something we should do next year. Um, a little bit easier on the facility's budget that we already got some other expenses on in January at the uh, if we're not looking at the, um, uh, trade-in value decreasing next year, this is just about the same value to the fair board if we gave it to them next year.
And then what does your budget look like? Did you have that budgeted for this?
I did budget that for sure, yeah, yeah.
But without the trade-in, with the trade-in.
I've I've budgeted it at full value.
Full value, yeah. So it is in your budget.
Yeah, I did put it in there, yeah. Yep.
So what's your opinion on that? Rather to see the fair board, if they want it, have their own?
Yeah, I believe so. I mean, if I did the trade-in, I have thirty-five hundred more dollars in case I need to purchase something else, but, yeah.
But your mowers are gonna be here when you will.
Right, yeah. And it hasn't been a problem, Sharon, it's been, it worked out real well, so.
Well, who knows, it might not rain this week.
We have irrigation here.
Here.
Here, we have irrigation.
Both places will have irrigation.
Yeah, right. So.
Yep.
We won't be pulling for a few months, Jim.
Yeah, we're gonna.
No, but you can at least tell these we're gonna do the deal, just we don't know if we're trading in or.
Okay. We can do that.
Just so there isn't a price jump.
That was all I have.
Do I have anything else for Scott? Thank you.
Just a brief update on the elevator, sounds like they're on track and should be wrapped up by the end of February. As they're telling me this morning, so maybe in three weeks, there'll actually be a functioning elevator in there, not for, uh, staff or, but we might be able to get Castile equipment up and down, so.
It's going well. Thanks, Scott. Thank you.
So just a clarification on the on the entrance project. I wasn't looking to split that up between two.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just didn't know how you we needed to do or how we needed to do it.
Okay.
Because if he bid it, I mean, he 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 proposed it as separate, but.
If you post it as separate, I think really what you have to do is if you're not gonna go with the lowest responsible bid, you have to in the minute justify why you're deviating from that, and I think here you could say one project really, or any one, and I wonder, I also wonder if that price, you know, like you said, Mark, you don't think got that, it doesn't seem like they brought that in, I wonder if that would also affect their overall price, not that that's necessarily the the place we're going, but, um, I think you just have to give the explanation as to why we're going with the overall low bid, um, if if that's what we decide to do, or or why the decision makes us justify it. I would see justification and less disruption, having, and having two crews here rolling out, and then more consistency in the finished project, they're gonna look exactly the same. So both of those seem like. Yeah, it seems like there's strong arguments for justification away from the from the lowest responsible bid, depending on where we go.
And I'm not saying the park didn't do that. You know, that's those two separate ones, I just I just went to the last page, it's on the total amount, so. Thank you. David. Wherever you feel like you want to be. I think this will work better for what I brought.
The mics are always on, so.
That's up.
Yep.
Um, so David Widler, our legislative audit here to do the closing conference for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit, Clay County, make sure I get my audit straight. Uh, did Carrie, did you give them a copy of the letters or?
Um, I gave Travis a copy of the letter that we need to sign. So I did not, I did not, no. Yeah, well, no, I don't think I sent these to you.
Oh, okay, sure, I would.
I sent the other stuff, but not these.
Okay, so with the audit, pretty much all the day to day operations. We all have trouble with what we tested, look good. Then really having troubles, but this first letter that I gave you, we are required to communicate certain things to you by generally accepted auditing standards. Um, there are eight items. The first one, we were engaged to give our opinions on your appropriateness of your accounting policies. Our account policies are very appropriate. Based on both generally accepted accounting principles. Um, difficulties encountered performing the audit, we noted no significant dealing difficulties in dealing with management and trying to perform and conduct our audit. Uh, we also did not have significant disagreements with management that I am aware of. Um, we're also required to communicate corrected and uncorrected misstatements. No material unposted audit adjustments. So anything that we found was material stated was corrected. I'm a copy of those for giving to Carrie approved.
I thought I sent that to you last week. Maybe I. Like, look.
I don't remember seeing.
I think I did, but I will look through my emails though real quick while you're talking.
Um, we also required to communicate any other misstatements that we felt was not necessarily correct. We'll have them today. So. Try to get your audit done, that's for your bond debt rating, so we can keep that up where it's supposed to be. We gotta throw in this all. While Carrie's looking for that. We have requested as the LA certain representations from the county uh management, which. That like that Travis has. Um, I will be a signed copy of that before I leave today. So I hope you wanna do that now before we continue, if you wanna do that at the end.
This one authorized me to cycles. What's it say?
A lot.
Uh, for those of you who were here from the last audit, it's the same exact letters. Look at this audit, not the previous one, so. Uh, yes, there is a lot of things on there.
We just go through what, what he does.
You look at. Yeah, uh, it's US management have accepted responsibility for the internal controls, the. County practice or county principles that you use, all the transactions that were recorded. There's no separate, separate set of books being run. Um, apply with provisions of grants, state laws, things of that.
I make a motion authorize the chairman.
A second on that.
Motion to second any further discussion.
Hearing that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Uh, the next item, what we are required to communicate with uh those charged with governance is consultation with any other accountants as far as I'm aware. Assisted with any other accountants. Not be aware of that, not on it, so. See if that is correct. And then other audit findings or issues, um, I know this says there were no other findings, but. Other than that, we will discuss on that second letter that I provided. That felt to be brought. But there isn't any questions on that first letter. Second one. Uh, this is. I've referred to as the management letter. This is where we discuss the findings that we felt appropriate, that we need to be discussed with management. Um, to start with, the first part kinda gives some definitions of. Items that we have, efficiency in terms of control, this design or operation of the control does not allow for. Managements to detect or detect and correct or find statements on a timely basis. Uh, material ones are the more significant ones, or I guess. The more severe deficiencies, the other one, uh, significant deficiency is one that we think it's less severe, but important to communicate. So during the audit, we found two. One. Um, well, we found two items. Are two significant or deficiencies in internal controls that we felt that US board you be aware of. I can, off the top of my head. They are both material, one is material, they're both deficiencies. I was trying to find that on my computer. It's not wanna collaborate.
I'm also not finding the email, not to interrupt, but um my phone groups things together weird, so I will send it to you as soon as we're done. Okay, sounds good.
On the first item, this is a. Essentially, it's gonna be a repeat of the right prior audit, dealing with the cash management, um, in addition to. The cash reconciliation is not being reconciled back to the general ledger, cash balances. Properly. That's not where. A report that Rhonda was running is reconciling to a number that does not agree with. Auditor general ledger. And then in addition to that, with the series twenty twenty three bonds, that, that account was not included in. Treasury records, the artist records and on the artist's account treasury. So we want to make sure that that. Account gets included on everything, considering you guys bonded out for a significant amount of money. Say, got those assets.
Um, one quick question on those. So uh, so I was on the commission last year and we heard your audit report last year.
Yep.
Correct? And so that was on, would that have been the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two legislative audit?
That would be the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Okay, all right. And so, so I guess I'm just curious about like if we're, if we're hearing again something from last year. Does that just mean that you're looking at old enough records that you're still seeing an issue from previous? Or is it something that was asked to be addressed and it wasn't addressed?
Get my thoughts straight. Um, we, when we go through the audit, we wanna make sure that if what we are finding in the previous audit is being all correctly. We would look at this anyways, even if it wasn't an issue in prior audits. So this is something that has been going on, that we would still like to see corrected.
At this point, I think as close as we are to starting with the new software.
Gotcha.
We are. Kind of, I think Rhonda and I are on the same page that, you know, we're. Do we, do we spend a lot of time and money to fix what we've got? We're, you know, a month, maybe two months away from starting a new software. I think I'd like to just start with the new software and start fresh.
I think that seems like an efficient use of county resources. So I, I think that that's, that's sensible. And I think that we would have the expectation, would, I don't know if you would agree, but implementing a new software system would be a great opportunity to address these, is that?
Yes, I would agree. And um, other counties that. Completely stopped reconciling their cash and they asked us for their help. If we found in our experience that it's not worth the time it takes to go back. And redo them for the months that they haven't been done, or use your. Reconcile to a number that doesn't mean anything, right? So I would recommend just trying to get it straight going forward. Um, I will say outside of not having that bond account money on there, the. Records that they do have um was, that was within twenty six dollars of the reconciled cash as of twelve thirty one, twenty twenty three.
Nice.
So I don't think there's really anything missing. I think it's just a recording from air, so.
That's really helpful context. I think it can be hard to understand exactly how much we to worry about these things with, I guess, so.
Right, thank you.
For what it's worth, Rhonda's office and my office do a lot of um. Reconciling together manually every day, just to make sure that we're not losing track, because we know that. Software doesn't always do what it's supposed to do. Even the best software doesn't always do what it's supposed to do, but we try to keep track manually, just so that we know where we're at.
And I will say that, and I think I just mentioned this, but what they're rec, what they're agreeing to every day and every month is. That number that we're looking for. Rec, the number that the software was pulling for the reconciliation. No idea where it's pulling it from, but it is not anywhere close to what they're doing, so. Any other questions or comments before I go on to the next item? On the second, um, deficiency that we noted in internal control was controls designed to provide for accurate financial reporting. Um, for the preparation of the financial statements that Carrie prepares every February or March. Uh, we had to make twenty five adjustments to the twenty two, twenty three statements for either. Statements that are material or items that we need to address for proper presentation and performance, but generally accepted. Again, this is not like a day to day thing. This Carrie does her reports each year. It's more so a reporting error and not a operation, internal control failure, okay, so. Do we have any comments, questions or concerns about this item? If you do think of one, just let me know. I certainly help answer them. There were no other internal controls that we felt that we needed to bring to your guys' attention. Everything else was smaller things. That we felt was appropriate at the department level to communicate. Um, item number three is a material violation of, of state law seven dash ten dash four. Um, this one has to do with the annual financial report. The twenty twenty two annual report was not published or filed with the audio general of the Department of Legislative Audit on a timely basis. Which that would be by the end of March every year. It needs to be published. Uh, the twenty twenty two report wasn't filed until, I wanna say September. And as far, as far as I'm aware, has not been published yet. So that's. Finding that out for that one. Do we have any comments or questions?
That one was an oversight on my part.
That's for twenty twenty two?
Right.
Yes. So we need to publish that.
Just wondering about that. It seems like it'd be a weird, confusing thing for people to see show up in the paper.
I, but if you have to do it.
Yeah.
I don't know. I will find out and I will let Carrie know.
Okay.
It seems most likely that anybody, like if we were to publish it next week, few people are gonna catch the twenty twenty two at the top of the thing. And they're gonna be like, well, this must be the twenty twenty four financial annual report, right?
I feel like it would cause a lot of confusion, but.
But if state law dictates it. You find out.
I will find out. I, my gut instinct probably says no, even though you, it's not. Not in compliance with state law, but you've already still not been in compliance. I'll, I'll find out and I'll let you know.
Okay.
It might get a little confusing for the people of Clay County, considering the twenty twenty four one would be published years soon, but.
Guess we could put some weird, big, bold thing at the top. It's come to our attention.
I've, this is the first time that I've ever had to do this comment, so I, I am, I'm not entirely sure on this one, but I will find out. I'm not carrying on, so. Um, and then we noted that for, I guess, item number four, uh, we know that about four minutes of the commission meetings were not published, many of the newspapers. Just wanna make sure that all of those are getting published.
Again, oversight on my part, I.
Do we know which four of those are?
I think so. I think.
If not, I can find them.
I think you've covered it with me, yeah.
Because those should be published.
And they are on our website. Um, so I mean, they're out there for the public, but again, just didn't get them sent to the paper, so.
I think file those for sure. I'm sorry. Yes, we don't know the answer to that.
Just trying to cover all the bases.
Uh, and then again, we noted other less significant items. I think I've mentioned this, that we've discussed with the department heads that we felt that was not appropriate to bring to your level. Like to know them, you would have to talk with your. And Carrie has a list of all.
Yep.
All in one place. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Like discuss.
I, I have one that I don't know if you can answer, but you know, every county is a complicated entity. We're all doing things our own way. Expect that you do audits at many other counties. Um, so I would be surprised if there was absolutely no. You know, if you're doing a good job with your audit, that there was no findings at all. So, so I'm not overly concerned about the findings you have. But I am curious, within the context of all the counties that you do audits on, how would we do it in a kind of a qualitative sense?
Um, most counties usually end up with um. Usually do end up doing a lot of corrections to their statements, just because there's a lot of things to keep track of and. We deal with that on a day to day basis, whereas all the county auditors and the one county I do as accounting finance officer, they do that once a year, when they do the annual report. Like I said, I don't usually run into publishing of the annual report. But I do know there are other counties in the state that this is like a running issue. And I'm not overly concerned here, because this is the first time that I've seen it here. We usually find some counties that miss a few minute meetings. Lately. Um, with the cash, that first item on that letter. Uh, my one county that I usually do had not reconciled cash at all, or even attempted for. A little bit over a year. And then I'm working on another county right now that hasn't reconciled cash. So these are issues we run into at other counties. Um, it's not just specific to you. I'm not trying to be hard on you guys, but. I am required to disclose these. For the betterment of the county to make sure that. People can trust what's going on here.
Do I have any other questions for David? Thank you.
You're welcome. I said I'll be here for a little bit. Something, so if you have a question that you wanna ask. Well, I appreciate your time. It'll trade your records.
Service your office provides. Rod, are you on? Or Brent?
Looks like he's signed on, but maybe just stepped away.
Did he give you a, a date for sending the material bids?
No. I would think we could probably, you know, set this in as available, that kind of thing, safe with that. So it's just an annual thing that we do about this time of year.
Can anybody hear me?
Yep, we can now.
Okay, yeah, this is what we do every year. So I just needed to um to find out what the dates Kerry can publish it so we can get it advertised and send out the bid patterns.
I think we have the twenty fifth of the fourth.
Yeah, I would say the fourth is probably a safer bet by the time that Tracy gets those notices ready for me to send to the paper.
Do you want to do the?
Yeah, that did work.
What did you say? What'd you say, Rod?
I said it should work.
Okay. You just want to do nine thirty?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
That's one of the days my office, like, will be here, so that's where. And we won't approve them. We'll just override, just so I don't go through them. For the next meeting.
What was the discussion we were having about wanting to have stuff by like five p.m. the day before?
Yep, I was just gonna there.
Yep.
Just gonna bring that up.
All right.
Great minds think alike.
Yep.
We'll understand a motion to set that for the fourth of March at nine thirty. Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Rod, do you have anything else before we go on to ditch board?
Nope, that's, that's all.
Okay, undertake a motion to go on to ditch board.
Spooked.
Second, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. We're in ditch board. Let's see, invoices for, from Dakota Timber Clearing for lateral fifty. And there was one for Yankton Clay Ditch too, right? Or did he not send that one?
Uh, there should have been two.
Yeah.
We got one for Clay Ditch.
Oh, Clay County Ditch. One for eighty one sixty.
There should have been one for lateral fifty and one for Yankton Clay Ditch.
Okay, I think that's what we have. It's listed as Clay County Ditch, but.
Yep.
Nicely sent pictures. Yeah. Looks like they did a tidy job. Uh, I move to approve both invoices.
We gotta do them separate.
Okay, those are different. All right. I move to approve invoice. Oh, slow down here. Give me a number. Invoice number two oh three for clean out on lateral fifty for eight thousand one hundred and sixty three dollars and twenty eight cents.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes.
And I move to approve invoice number two oh two for twelve thousand two hundred and forty four dollars and ninety two cents for station removal on clay in the Yankton Clay Ditch.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Then we've got invoices for True North.
Invoice for nineteen thousand four hundred and forty four dollars and eighty cents to True North.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
Was, Rod, were these? Where did these get put in at?
That, the ones that you did on Clay Creek.
Okay.
Uh, over on the west end, I believe, both of them, Pullman, Pullman put them in.
Okay. So how?
One, one of them you already, they did two. One of them you already paid. Excuse me, one of them has already been taken care of. This one, um, I believe we got charged for the pipe, so you need to pay the highway department for this one.
So that seventy foot culvert, that was nineteen thousand?
Yeah, with uh, and then it had the big flop gate on it.
Okay.
So just to be clear then, this, this True North Steel invoice, am I paying that to True North Steel or to the highway department?
No, to the highway department.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes.
Hey Kerry?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't you, that'll save a lot of bookwork. Why don't you just pay it right directly to True North?
Oh, okay, I can do that.
That'll be, that'll save a bunch of paperwork.
To make sure it comes out of Clay Creek.
Right.
Thank you.
Let's see, then we've got a contract with Altag that they did hydraulic studying on Clay Creek.
Or they're, they're planning, they're planning, they're planning on doing. So I was.
Oh, so FEMA's asking for this.
FEMA's asking for this, and I went, I mean, I didn't drive out there because it looked like I would have been on a pretty no maintenance field road, uh, but is there a culvert on four fifty third?
No, they're in the laterals, which you just come off of four fifty, four fifty three.
Because I went to like their, the lat launch tube that they provided and looked at the map and it looks like there's no crossing.
Nothing crosses Clay Creek. It dumps into Clay Creek.
Oh, okay, so this is for a lateral that is dumping in at that.
No, it's, it's the, it's the culvert that goes through our, the the levee on Clay Creek.
Okay, all right, I was confused about that, all right. So like on their map here. Just help me understand, yeah. So we've got, we've got levees on either side of this, right?
Yep.
And so then there is a.
Right where the pin is at, there's a culvert that runs north and south.
Runs north and south between those two.
Between what two? Well, it comes down four fifty third. It's on the west side, right? Right off of four fifty three.
Okay, and then it allows this to drain into Clay Creek, Clay Creek. Thank you, all right. That was all. What the heck? Is this supposed to be overrun for a second? All right.
And this is something that FEMA is requiring us to handle.
Okay. I just need a motion to authorize me to sign it.
Make a motion, authorize the chairman to sign the contract with Altag FEMA.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. I think that's it for ditch board, unless anybody has anything else. Anything else for ditch board, Rod? We'll take that as a no. We'll entertain a motion to come on a ditch board. So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Uh, Lane, orderly report.
I believe Kerry sent it out to y'all, so we'll answer any questions you may or may not have.
Undertain a motion to approve or assign.
I move to approve.
Second, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes.
Thank you for the always very clear and detailed reports.
Or uh, Lane, I want this.
Yes. Resolution to work seven days a week? Is that what you want?
Yep, that's exactly it.
Office hours, twenty four seven.
Yeah, don't let my girls hear that.
I'm sure they're listening through your computer.
They probably are, because I had it pretty loud, so. Pay attention, no. Um, well, first thing, you know, the resolution that you guys asked that I prepare for when we close on the fourteenth of February, um, appears to be going forward with the new system. We've got our training completed. Now we're just playing in the sandbox, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, yeah, good times, but um, anyway, so like I say, I did um reach out to the newspapers. It'll be in the papers, both of them, this week. Our office will be closed and open again on the eighteenth, and I've also posted it on Facebook, so people are aware and I've noticed it's been shared a lot, so you know, hopefully everybody will see that. If not, I'm sure Kerry will get a lot of phone calls that day. But anyway, I think it's the best because we won't be able to do anything. So there's a resolution for that, and then I also proposed a resolution. I get a lot of emails and phone calls from entities who are always.
Let's finish.
Oh, sorry.
Do this one first and then we'll move on to the second.
I, I move to approve resolution twenty twenty five.
Second, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Do we have to rule call?
Yep.
Gilbertson.
Hi.
T Z.
Hi.
Brady.
Hi.
Gray Love.
Hi.
Montclair.
Hi. Motion passes.
Okay, sorry. I get so excited, you know? I like talking in front of people. Um, anyway, as I was saying, I get a lot of entities reach out to me. They want to have our tax records. And um, in the past, a lot of counties, I'll backtrack a little bit, a lot of counties charge um for these fees. You know, depending. I've heard anywhere from two hundred dollars to a thousand dollars, so um I've chose to sit in the middle and if entities that are not my escrow companies, like my escrows, like CoreLogic and Larita, the ones that provide most of the payment for the mortgages in Clay County, um I'm going to request a payment of five hundred dollars upfront before I provide them with the file because they're just, I don't even know what they want it for. I had one the other day. It took numerous emails for them to finally tell me. Well, we're, we cover businesses and you know, we look at their taxes and I'm like, no, you deserve to pay five hundred dollars for my tax records then. So anyway, that, I would like to have that out there, that if I am approached by anyone other than my escrow companies to charge five hundred dollars for the file.
So we're, uh, then, so some questions. I was just wondering, like, do, do we ever have anyone, so would this apply to, I don't know, some somebody local that might, I, I was trying to have, trying to understand why somebody would want the property tax records besides some big entity that's going to try to scam all of our taxpayers.
Correct, and that's, that's kind of my concern too. So far, I've only, I've been reached out, Black Knight is one of the companies that reaches out for records. You know, they will pay some work, some escrow, they do collect some escrows, so I'm not as wary about Black Knight, but this was a company out of Texas and I'm, why do you in Texas want our tax records? So I don't know the answer to that, Jeff. I'm curious myself. I don't know why some of these other entities want them other than to just compare. I'm guessing it's just a comparison for, you know, business practices.
What information would be included in there? You'd have address, you'd have the property taxpayer, you'd have.
Everything, that's everything.
I keep getting scam letters out of Texas.
Yeah, yeah. Are some, any, when, and what I do with a lot of these people and I've done in the past and I still will, I'm you know, I'm going to be pick and choose who I would send this to, and so far I've never sent it to anybody, but um I suggest they go to our website. They can go to our website. They can look up taxes. There's the Beacon site. There's, we have our Transcendent Technology site, which is directly fed from the taxing software that we're using currently. You know, do the research yourself. This is kind of my theory on it, but.
Is there any legal open, open records reason why we would be compelled to provide these CSVs to anybody?
Yeah, I mean, I feel more comfortable knowing that, and I think we're still allowing it. It's just we're being compensated for our time. The fact that other counties across the state are also charging, I, I, I would say that gives me a, without I haven't done a deep dive, but I would say that I feel a lot more comfortable knowing that other entities are requiring the payment for the same record, same services.
But I mean.
You would have to ask Lisa at the register of deeds, but I think she charges.
She charges, and so does Lanaya.
Because when you mentioned Black Knight, that was her reasoning to come in and charge them for her records.
And I guess where my mind's going is just like, is this just a door we could close and say you, you may not have access to these unless like this body approves it or something like that, and Rhonda would have to bring her request to us and we'd have to say, yes, it's okay to do it. I mean, like, it, I hate all of the scam tags, scam messages, mailbox full of scam phishing stuff, like if this is possibly a way we could limit for our citizens how much that crap they're getting, junk they're getting and apologize. I would try to do that.
Charge them, then we can, that'll limit. That'll eliminate a lot of this, and only one, then we don't have to make the decision. They decide on their own.
But these companies are surely making far more than five hundred dollars if they're going to this trouble of doing this, you know, so I mean, I think that they.
The five hundred bucks gets them one. It doesn't get them all the records, right?
It does, right?
It's a CSV of all the records.
And what it is, is I, I create a, which is what I create for our escrow companies, but it's, for me, it's just a couple keystrokes, but you know, it gives them, because you know, they need to know the legal description, the parcel, the amount due, you know, the escrow companies do, so they can match their records. But like you say, these others that are just wanting our information and like I say, I've, I've never shared it in the past and I've said it.
All properties or just the one property that we just?
But they could otherwise go and look it up.
Absolutely, independently.
I think with that, you could just shut that down. I don't know if there's anything that would, I mean, you're not shutting down public access. They still have the ability to go do that.
You can go get one record at a time. Saving our staff.
So this is compensating me for my time and effort.
Either that or.
Yep.
You know.
Well. Yeah.
They can still find it. Part of, part of housing, it's the housing authority to be a landlord on the program, and this isn't just our offices, it's nationwide. To be a landlord, you have to be current with your property taxes, so we have access to Beacon for that purposes. I can go on. They have paid their property taxes and taxes, so they are eligible landlords. So that's how we do it.
Property taxes are public information, so they can get them.
And we pay for a portal to provide that public information.
Well, it's on our website, yeah.
Yeah, that, we even paid something for.
For Beacon.
For Beacon to be able to provide that to people, so we're, we're already paying to have a way for people to access this. My inclination is to, is for us to authorize you to simply tell people, we don't provide that CSV or if you would like it. we, we don't provide that CSV, or if you would like it, you get on the agenda.
Right.
Come to one of our, you know, present at one of our meetings while you need it, and then we can approve giving it to you, but I think that many entities would say, okay, well, that's not.
And I'm, I'm perfectly okay with that, because like I say, I, I've always turned them down. But then when I hear all these other counties, oh, it's an easy five hundred dollars for click, click, here you go, you know. And I thought, well, I'll bring it to your attention, but, so that way, if, if it is somebody who I feel you know, or you guys feel, would be someone who, you know, I'll just say deserves this, you know, file. We charge them five hundred dollars if they choose not to pay it, they don't get the file.
Still establish the fee, and if it's, you're still uncomfortable with it, you can still say no.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Which is my plan.
Yeah, I mean, even though we have the fee in place, we can still deny.
Yeah, I mean, for the most part, that is my plan, but I just, you know, that way they can make the no decision too, if they don't want to pay for it, you know.
Feel we need to micromanage your decision. Yeah, decide who. Trust your, your decision.
Well, like, when I told the company the other, pardon me?
I just saw Linnea walk in, I was like, oh, good, Linnea's got input, sorry, she, she has a certain look on her face.
She does, because she provides files quite frequently, but, um, like the company, when I reached out to them and said, you know, before you guys even approved it, I said, well, there'll be a five hundred dollar charge. Makes sense, so.
Um, I was just re, rereading the language in here specifically, you know, I think that generally, when we provide a fee for something, the expectation is, if you pay the fee, you receive the service, and so I think what we want to just add maybe a little bit of language in here that, you know. Yeah.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
I was just gonna chime in and say, like, we also have a public record policy from our office, that's all of our public information as well. We provided it six hundred dollars, so Rhonda asked me for my thing in her processing, there's a request.
So we should make this the same as everybody's.
My information is different. More, she gives more information than I do.
But this is establishing a, uh, it doesn't say one office, oh, for the county treasurer, okay. I didn't know if we were making this county wide, or, you know, if this was coming your office and her office.
And, I mean, was it Black Knight that requested, or is it?
No, Ryan LLC out of Texas. Black Knight hasn't reached out to me now in a couple of years, but they have in the past.
Yeah, Black Knight used to get our information yearly, and they didn't. Take it this year, but I've heard of Ryan.
Have you?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Say that it gets tricky, it's, I'd say it's to our advantage to have something in place. Just this last year, there was an Office of Hearing Examiners case related to providing public information to these companies. So I think it's to our advantage to have something in place.
Why, why not make both the same?
We can, I just figured my information wasn't as in-depth as hers.
I don't, it doesn't matter.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Tweet this anyway.
Well, I do have a statement here that says any copy or, or report request will not be released prior to receipt of payment, isn't that what you were asking?
Well, well, I, but, but, so, so someone could say then, you must give me this document, because I'm giving you this check, so.
Do upon, but, okay.
And I guess, wondering about, I, I was just thinking that, that I could imagine there being, um, like research reasons why it would be important, so someone that actually might be trying to help us or something like that, do we want to have an, anything in here that would allow you to waive the fee in a particular instance?
Gee, you're doing that already, correct?
I am, I. I haven't been charging my escrow companies.
That's, that's what.
Yeah, because my escrow companies are doing my tax collection for me.
So we want to have something in here that says that, so, so this is a bottom, like, upon approval of the treasurer for the release, and then also something that empowers you to, and like, unless the fee is waived by the treasurer. Does that seem appropriate to others? And then that gives you room to not charge the escrow companies, so you have authority to do that, and you could also just decline, you're obviously a scammer. Is that?
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that makes sense as well, I think right now, the way this is written, would likely be I think there'd be a very strong argument to be made, that this is telling you so long as I pay the fee, you must relinquish the records, it also doesn't give that authority to waive the fee for escrow. Those would make sense to me also.
I would move to include, approve this resolution with those two amendments, I'm not sure exactly.
Might as well wait until she gets it cleaned up.
Or, yeah, we have, so, okay, then, I apologize, I resent that motion, I move to table this.
It's like Ryan LLC is international tax service out of Dallas, Texas, and they're currently in a lawsuit with the federal.
Oh, there you go. I Googled them, but I didn't Google that deep, so.
Now, does it make any sense to have your office and Linnea's office and Lisa's office charge the same amount?
I don't know what we all share, I mean, that's how I was looking at it.
I think the amount of information probably too, i- is different, and.
When Lisa sends her information, she's sending literal, like, scanned deeds. What we're sending is information we've collected and prepared. Deeds are something that lawyers or whatever title companies, you know, they're the ones that have prepared the bulk of the documents. Lisa's done all the work to scan it in, collect it, et cetera, I'm not saying she doesn't do, but ours is like improvement information, when they ask us, they want to know, okay, how many bedrooms, bathrooms, square footage, garages, how buildings does this property have attached to that parcel number identifier, and then assessed values. That's what we send out when we send out the information, it's our improvement data, legal descriptions, parcel numbers.
Which is all available online.
Yes.
And they could buy a Beacon subscription and get all of that.
Yes.
Yep.
It's just having it all collected, I think the big thing too, that is important, is to understand what format you can provide the data in, and make sure that that's what we have. Because for us, it used to be, we could only pro, provide our assessment book in a PDF, that's it. So, I think that's part of what that O H E case related to, was the fact that they were requesting it in a format that they could manipulate, and the only way that the county could provide the information was via PDF. It was not manipulated, like, you couldn't manipulate it, and so that's something they ran into, was this company. It was a request for public information situation, where they said, you're denying our request for public information. They weren't denying it, they were just saying, we can only provide a PDF, we can't provide CSV or Excel. So that might be another thing to consider, I don't know if our policy has that in there, I am able to run reports now. But my assessment book is still only PDF, but I can get improvement data and whatnot as CSV or text file. I don't know if that helps or hinders.
Yeah.
I was like, I can give my two cents on why we might have different pricing.
I guess, for me, the pricing is, I, you know, it's a pain, you don't wanna, you don't want to have to do it, and then the certain price then gets, hopefully gets rid of the scammers, or slows them down.
What is the hunting app? Onyx or Orion? There's one of those, like, they'll ask for it every so often, just so like hunters can know who owns the land. Um, Polaris will ask every so often for their GPS that they install.
Yeah, you're not charging enough to that hunting app then.
I, I don't know the last time they've requested.
It's like, how did you get this number?
Yeah, but I do know that a lot of people come in with that hunting app, and they they, um, they're like, so-and-so owns it, I'm like, they sold it seven years ago, so it's old data at this point, but. That's, that's, I think, the biggest thing to consider, and why the pricing might be different, I also understand if you want it all to be the same. But I would say the information that Lisa gives out, I don't know what her amount is, but that's why ours would be different.
Okay, if you want to keep them separate, that's fine too.
Yeah, I just.
My thought was, if you try to stay in the middle of that thousand and zero. If somebody's gonna pay five, they'll pay six, and then it would be.
I can do that, I can, I can do, just like Linnea.
You can do whatever you want.
Uh-oh, we got another one.
What do you charge?
A dollar page, that's classified law.
No, like my Black Knight.
Black Knight's a dollar page. Oh, it's classified law.
That's the minimum.
I can make a deal with my title company, which is what I do, because the title company is our backup, so they get charged two hundred dollars a month, or both title companies get charged two hundred dollars a month for all of our images. And this was based on a agreement from years ago, but they are our backup, so if ever we were to crash and lose everything, they would back, they would give us all of our documents back, so that's why they get a special. But everybody else, it's dollar page, so, like, Black Knight. I can average, depending on how busy we are. So, like, last year, I want to say we did about fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars in Black Knight money.
So what would that equate, if you were a dollar page?
Well, if it's CSV.
It's CSV, it's just a spreadsheet. That's all I can create to get, to provide for me, and mine is set up.
For Black Knight?
For anybody.
Oh, okay.
Mine is set up for there's been communication between the escrow companies and our software. They talk, so I send them the file, they create their file, it comes back, it loads into our system. So it is what it is, and I will not change it, it is what it is, you know, and it's a CSV file, that's what it is.
What would be the concern of sending a CSV file? Yeah, is there any concern?
Sure, I guess I've never, I've never thought about that, Kevin.
Typically, they ask for a CSV so that they can upload it into their software without any issues.
Yeah. Oh, it's just.
Yeah.
Data analysis is easier.
Right now, it's Ryan LLC.
And it's just, they just want, like, a spreadsheet, because I didn't sell farm service credit. So, farm service credit, they purchase our transfers every month, the same file that I sent you. They purchase from us every month for ten dollars a spreadsheet, and that was set up before I took office as well, and I've just always kept it with that. And, because it's just a spreadsheet, I'm already running it anyway, I'm sending it to Linnea, I'm sending it to the state, it's one more person, so it's not costing me anything. So, but I don't know if that is the same as like what you're doing.
I'm just.
Right, well, because all of my stuff is public record.
Mine is too.
Oh, okay, so I mean, I don't know if that's.
Yeah.
I think you're just unique in that you have qualified law related to what you can and can search.
Yeah, so you can send it, oh, go big. I mean, especially if it's, I don't know who this company is, I mean, mine is a local company, the, you know, the farm credit services, they're local, they're just like kitty corner. So, you know, they have it for their records, but.
But, your spreadsheet with transfers is probably far less than hers with the entire tax record.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, ten dollars versus.
Ten dollars a month is mine.
Yeah.
Like a nineteen thousand line, oh, spreadsheet, they charged us my line.
I, I think each line could be just a big enough font that it covers a page, and then you just charge nineteen thousand bucks.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be proactive in case somebody would reach out, and, you know, I can help generate some revenue for the county. Because, you know, like I said, I provide for them Beacon and our, on, on, you know, T Tech site, and if they don't want to do the research themselves, and they want the full file, they could pay for it. That's just my theory on it.
So you've got Farm Service Agency?
The farm, the farm credit, the people that are with, um, they're in Margaret's building.
Farm Service Agency.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because Farm Credit Services is a bank.
Yeah, sorry. I do a lot for both of them, and so I'm just always like, the farm people. You're the one with Margaret. But yes, they give the transfers.
Well, I'll reword this, and just bring it forward, and like I said, what this is, is just putting into place that if the day comes that somebody is deserving of the ti- tax file, they'll report.
Yeah. Appreciate you being proactive on it.
Yeah.
Good.
So far, I've never provided it, but, you know, so I've never needed to charge, but, you know.
And I like to encourage you to continue to.
And I wonder.
Keep most of them away.
Part of that is, I think, definitely we're providing it out of Bossa Nova. And it doesn't do that anymore, yeah.
So, what do they want it for?
I don't know.
Marketing, I'm sure, scam, I mean, marketing, AKA scamming, yeah.
It brings a little extra, and it really helps.
So, did we get a motion on the table?
I, I motioned to table this until next week, when you bring us a revision. And I don't know if there was a second.
I'm a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion passes.
Thanks, guys, everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
Carrie, I've got a midco form here, but I don't see it.
It's on the bottom of the agenda.
So. Yeah, go to the, yeah, go to that one, there you go. I'll go to the other one, weird. Just one from Friday? You don't have links to either of those. Oi, go to this one, I don't know why your links aren't working, and then just scroll.
Yeah, but it's not on the agenda, that's why.
Page fifteen one?
I'm not seeing it on the agenda.
Oh, it was on the Friday agenda, did it get dropped from the?
Says following items will be considered, times during the meeting, second line down, extension office, midco contract.
Oh, extension office, there we go.
So, page fifty-one and.
So this is a five-year contract?
Yes.
For eighty-something dollars.
And that's what we had before, so the rates are the same, everything stays the same, they're just asking for a renewal of the contract, so that they don't have to raise our rates.
And there's like a five hundred dollar install fee?
I did ask about that, that does not apply since we already have the service.
And this is very expensive internet, but, I mean, but maybe, you know, maybe it's may, maybe the reliability is very important, but I know I'm getting ten times the speeds through Blue Peak for sixty dollars a month instead of.
Yeah, um, when we came up for renewal with the courthouse, we asked Erickson's what their opinion was, and at the time, and this was just very recent, they still recommended midco.
Yeah.
Um, due to just reliability that they've experienced with their customers.
Yeah, and I thought that was a really s- strong argument for the courthouse, but I, I have le, I put less weight on that for the extension office, I just think our services are more critical. Like, we, we can't be down, but if the extension office, you know, has a day where their internet isn't working as well as it normally is, that doesn't seem like as big of a deal to me.
I don't, I don't know enough about technology to know whether that matters, that the extension is on the same domain as the courthouse. I don't, I don't know if that matters, if that doesn't matter. I don't know enough about technology for that, I just assumed that we needed to keep it the same. I, I, yeah, I am too, enough, I thought they had to be the same, but maybe they don't.
Andy, who are we going with on the new law enforcement? When do the, does this have a, has to be signed by date?
Um. I don't have the rest of the contract in front of me, it should be in your packets. And I wonder too, Jeffrey, um, they, I mean, I know that both companies charge more for business internet versus residential, so that's probably part of the difference there, at least.
Yeah. I was, I'm just thinking. I was, I'm just thinking like, maybe we want to throw, if, if we can find how long this is good for, give Blue Peak as the other local provider an opportunity to give us an offer and see what it looks like. Cause like, I, just thinking like, if I'm working in an extension office, like a hundred megabits per second is like a pretty low speed. And so especially if you've got a bunch of kids doing like tech stuff, and they're all, you know, doing their four H projects and they're all got laptops out there and they're programming drones or something. I mean, it's just, I can imagine, I would prefer to have a higher regular speed with possibly a little bit less reliability in an extension office than a consistently slow speed that is always going to be there. That, that would just be my, I think that that, that would be my preference if I was working in an extension office specifically. Like, maybe not if I'm working in a treasurer's office or something, you know, I might say the reliability's kind of like, gotta be there. Not to say, you know, I vote against accepting this one, but I just, we might want to look at and see what, what would be the price difference if we, price or speed difference. And, and a five-year, I mean, that's, we're committing for a long time too, with, I think, that some of the uncertainty about that office and like, whether it's going to remain there or if it would end up, you know, getting moved into the law enforcement center. It's a blind or something. I don't know.
Table this for a week or?
That's, that's kind of where I'm leaning. If, I, I haven't found, I've been trying to scan through and see if there's an accept by date, but I'd be interested in maybe seeing what you know. I mean, unless other people think I'm just, you know, wasting time and energy on this, but.
I mean, the, the request date was one o- was January sixth. So I mean, we meet on the fourth. That gives us, that's thirty days.
Right, yeah.
Can't imagine it would be less than thirty days.
I, I will say in a different instance, I, I've not been pleased with Blue Peak's commercial customer service. So I've, I've had interactions with their residential, but there's a nonprofit that I work with and, and have had some pretty severe problems with not getting responsiveness from their customer service. So that's something that we should think about. I would, I'd be curious if we are going to look at this next week again, also about maybe asking midco, you know, how do things change? I mean, I don't know that the si- the five-year term is necessarily a, a good thing. Like, it might be better to have a little bit shorter one, or at least to get real clarity on how would we exit the contract and what, uh, I haven't read the fine print close enough to know, but I can between now and next week. But yeah, if we break the contract, what are we hoping for? Is it the remaining of the payments or what?
There, yeah.
It's usually how it works.
I did ask that. It was, it would be the remainder. And I think they will do shorter contracts, but I think the rates get bumped up a little bit then.
So, uh, I'll move to table this until next week. Plus. Just a second, man.
So, motion and a second to table. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Vouchers and payroll. We get to see those? Move to pay your vouchers.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second and a further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Employee handbook revisions.
I can explain a little bit of this. Um, we had a department head meeting. And there were some things that we felt like we could clear up um, that would make our payroll process more streamlined. So to start with, everybody in the courthouse is on the first to the end of the month for payroll. Currently, in order to get our paychecks out to everybody, you know, through direct deposit, we have to submit the payroll, depending on the way it falls, you know, prior to the twenty-fifth. So the department heads are getting me anything, you know, pertinent by like the twenty-first. So essentially, we're cutting off at the twentieth. Really, in order to accrue sick and vacation time and things like that correctly in palacity, we need to be cutting off on the twentieth instead of the thirty-first. And then that way, it would also eliminate, like if somebody calls in sick between the time we cut off and issue paychecks until the end of the month, then we don't have to do that correction the following month. It's just already there. Because we're, the cutoff is matching up. Um, the highway department has always, since I've been here, the twenty years I've been here, they have always varied their pay periods every single month. The old rationale behind that was when we used to get paid on the last Tuesday of the month, then they would try to make it so that they had the same number or a very close number of hours per month. Doesn't really, um, apply so much anymore since we get paid on the twenty-fifth of every month. And sometimes it makes it really, really hard for Tracy to get that payroll prepared and get it to me and time for me to get it into palacity and get that, um, submitted so that those direct deposits can be done on time. Um, I just feel like it would be so consistent if everybody would be the twenty-first through the twentieth for their pay dates, the pay periods. Um, it eliminates like custom programming and palacity that they have been having to do for me each month. It, it eliminates having to have like a bunch of different batches of different people that I'm doing in palacity. Um, the highway department currently does their time sheets on paper. And if they would use the time clock function in palacity, everything would already be in there. So there would be no, um, work on Tracy's part to enter it on a spreadsheet and bring it to me every month. Like, it's just in there. It's there already. It transfers in. I just verify, Tracy can verify that it kind of looks correct and it's done. I mean, there's, there's, it eliminates that manual work and that chance for manual errors because it never fails, you know? Every few months, a number will get transposed, whether it's her or me or what, and we just wouldn't have that anymore because it would already be in there. They literally just clock in. Rhonda can probably, you know, speak for this because her people have been using it. The rest of the courthouse has been using it. They log into palacity each morning. The clock in button is there. They punch that button. Once it recognizes that they're clocked in, then it changes to a clock out. And so then at the end of the day, they just go in there, hit clock out. I mean, it's so easy. So simple.
And if they forgot a clock in or a clock out, they have the ability to modify a record, but then there's some tracking, I'm sure.
The supervisor can get in there and modify it. Yep. Um, and there's, you know, like, like you said, there's a, you know, a tracking of, of who's doing the things. Um, Andy's probably literally the most complicated department that we have, and he's willing to try out the time clock function. Um, I think they've been pretty, pretty competent that everything should work pretty well for him with shift differentials and overtimes and things like that.
We already do a time clock in another software anyway. I'll just use palacity and see where things end up. The time was switching over.
Yeah, um, I looked at the, so Tracy gave me the, the highway pay period dates that she had planned out for the year. And the easiest thing to do if we're going to switch to the twentieth for the cutoff date would be to choose the dates where the highway department already planned to cut off on the twentieth, and that's February and May. So those are kind of our two ideal months. I would just like to get it going. That's, you know, just personal preference, but that would be my suggestion would be that we would pass this, uh, employee manual change for effective, um, February twentieth. There is a second part to this. Um, vacation time, there's a, a modification to that too. Currently, we cut off at a hundred and sixty hours at the end of the year. So anybody that is over a hundred and sixty on December thirty-first, it cuts it off to a hundred and sixty, and that's what they have starting in January then. We're proposing as department heads to have that as a rolling hundred and sixty each month so that we don't get close to the end of the month and we're scrambling to get people's vacation time used up so that they don't lose it. Creates a problem with staffing, makes us short-staffed. Um, it just becomes kind of a hassle. I think if we were to, you know, just have it month to month rollover, that would be ideal. We don't have to do that starting in February because I think out of fairness, we should probably give those people that are over a hundred and sixty a little bit of time to get that used up. So that we could do more like April first or, you know, that doesn't have to be tied to the pay period change. It can be two separate, two separate dates. So that's my suggestion.
So this, I don't want to open a can of worms here and has nothing to do with. Once you get this pay velocity and everything, everybody's using it, it's, everything's going smoothly and stuff. Is there any need or want to go to two-week pay period?
Um, we surveyed the employees.
Couples, that's kind of huge sometimes.
Yeah, we surveyed the employees, um, a few years ago, and it was pretty much fifty-fifty. Like, some just plain didn't care, but.
Easier with that software.
It would.
It's not manual stuff.
Absolutely would. And I mean, there's, there's literally no reason that we couldn't do that. So.
It would just cost a little more.
A little bit, right?
Um, you, no, it wouldn't because the other thing is.
To do it twice in seven months.
But the other.
Bank, I should say.
The other thing is, um, to consider with the whole pay period thing is that palacity charges us per person. We have a per-person rate with them. So we might as well be getting the full functionality of the software using the time clock functions that everybody else is using. We might as well have the highway do that too. And the sheriff's office, as long as it works for them. Um, but they don't charge us per payroll run. So if we do it twice a month, it makes no difference.
Okay.
It doesn't, we don't pay more. So.
Now, doing this, everybody's in agreement. Andy's going to switch over. The highway department doesn't want to do it.
They would like to keep paper time sheets, and I think that's.
But it's time to, I think we're going to have to drag them along.
I think it's simply like the idea of change, the idea of having to learn a new system. Cause they are also switching software. So what they have out there is going to be different anyway.
So that they don't have a actual computer or something out in the shop?
They, they don't. Um.
So they don't want to have to come in to the office and do this, is that?
So, yeah, there's, there's options. So they could, they could all log in on one computer in the office, like Tracy's computer. Um, or palacity allows for like a, what they call a kiosk setup where they could have like an iPad or something that everybody uses. Um, if they don't want to purchase anything, they also could enable their employees to, um, log in on their phones. Clock in on those. So.
I'm with you. There's got to be a way they could.
The only drawback with the phones is, you know, if they're not quite at work yet, they could potentially clock in when they're not there yet. But it'd also be really convenient for that person that's going to go plow snow in Wakanda to pick up the machinery, clock in, and then Wakanda shop. They don't have computers there, so they would have to have the ability on their phone. But there are options out there, so.
Well, we could get an iPad at the county shop, so they're not using Tracy's computer. And then, uh, you'd have two iPads, one at the county shop, um, here and one in Wakanda.
Do they have internet in Wakanda? I don't know that they do.
Probably have to have cellular on it.
So I mean, in that case, I still do think that the phone is probably a good option for, for Wakanda anyway. And really, it would be just. She could. She could. I mean, depends how much they want to put on her for that every day, but she could. Yeah, that's true. I mean, she's doing it at the end of the month, but.
And you're only talking when they're plowing snow. Cause otherwise they're.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I'm, I, that's usually how it works. I mean, everybody ends their shift at the shop, correct? Begins and ends.
Yeah, um, the only, the only thing I could foresee getting tricky if they were to use Tracy's computer. If she's not clocking everybody in as a supervisor, then I could see there being that lag of time where you've got to clock, you've got to sign each person in with their username and password. Cause I don't think hers could be set up as a kiosk and as the, the regular, um, capabilities as a supervisor. Not sure how that works, but still learning a lot of this myself. So. Uh-huh. I think so. But, I mean, there are options that wouldn't cost us anything to get them started. You know, if we wanted to give them mobile access, everybody's got a cell phone these days and if they don't, again, Tracy could log them in.
I like it. The only, all the changes make sense to me. I've, you know, I think the only one that I have any hesitation about what would make sense is the, uh, the change to accrue. Just, just thinking about how that, that is a little bit of a little bit of a less generous practice than we had. If a person could, I just was thinking, well, you could, you could get almost a hundred hours beyond a hundred and sixty by the end of the year. Yep.
Yeah.
That is a.
Last quarter of the year, so. Yeah. And then it's, it's tough to budget when they retire.
Yes.
It is, and it's also tough to give a person that much time off all at once. I mean, if they're intentionally saving up those hours beyond a hundred and sixty to take a vacation, that's a lot.
Two hundred and sixty-hour vacation.
That is a lot. Like, it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good. We, we did have conversation about the six months of the, you know, vacation for the first six months. Was that also?
We did. Um, I can't, did I put that in there?
That one wasn't. I don't think that was highlighted.
We also, yeah, we also had conversation, um, about changing it so that they would start accruing vacation time when they, when they start. Right now, they can accrue sick time from the day they start, but they don't start accruing any vacation until six months on the job. And the thought process behind that is we always have somebody that, you know, maybe gets sick and they don't have quite enough sick time built up. Or maybe, you know, family comes in from out of state. They see them once a year. They can't take any time off because they don't have any to use. Um, there's just situations once in a while where it would be nice to let a person have a day of vacation. And if they're new on the job, they can't.
I, I think also, um, you know, somebody who unexpectedly, you know, changes job in March that had already planned a, you know, vacation of some sorts in July. Now suddenly, things could have already been paid for and you're scrambling. Obviously, it's not going to probably account for that entire thing for them. But I think in this world, we live in a different world than we used to. I mean, the employers kind of had more of an upper hand. I think that it would make us again more competitive. I, I think as an employee, depending on who they are, may be less inclined to take a job knowing that, you know, all things considered, if pays the same or similar, you know, those first six months not having that ability to do any leave could influence in its way. I think perhaps it gives us one more chance to be a little more competitive with, um, with folks. I mean, I, maybe Linnea would be the one to speak to on that because she's just ran the gamut on, you know, interview after interview, enter after interview. I wonder how much this could at least to some degree help her.
It's hard to say that they couldn't take the time off if they had a pre-planned vacation or something, but it's going to be unpaid then. We all know in this economy, that's pretty tough for people. So.
Cause what do you accrue on, um, a day a month?
Yes.
For the first five years after six months.
Yeah.
Right. And here she comes.
I can tell you for a fact that I took this job when I started.
I can tell you for a fact that I took this job when I started here over a different job because they gave you ten hours of vacation for ten days. So eighty hours. A year, that was it. Never accrued more. And that's first six months was tough. I had stuff that I took days unpaid. But at the end of it, I knew that it kept accruing. So I think vacation is a huge thing when you. About hiring and deployability.
So maybe one slight tweak, so as I was looking, so then, so if a person resigns in good standing, then they're getting paid out. Um, and if we're repeatedly having people on the payroll for like four months or five months or something like that, could we maybe include some language that says that that only kicks it? After six months or after a year on the job even or something like that.
Yeah, I think that, I think that would be fair. It's really what we're after is, you know, the people that are, are, are new, but they're learning quickly and they're doing a good job and they're, you know. They're not leaving right away.
And honestly, it's really telling when you hire someone, they get a day of vacation in their first month and they take it the second they can.
It's gonna hit.
Yeah, and that's, that's telling about. You know. Doesn't always mean they're not someone you want to keep, but it can, it's, are they doing a good job? Are they getting caught up? And I think it was Rod also pointed out that this would not in any way be tied to that six months of probationary. Just because they're accruing vacation right away doesn't mean that they're not still in a probationary period.
How do people feel about those changes about removing the?
Well, let's break it down with the first one, the PayLasti. Just drag everybody into the twenty first century.
There we go.
Alright, so well-intended motion to. Everybody on the same pay. Pay period and.
Time clock or.
The revisions to the pay period, so I moved to approve the proposed revisions to the pay periods of paydays and to the recording time and time records. Sections of the. I wanna put on when that becomes effective. Yes.
And what was the date?
The twentieth of.
February twentieth.
Twenty first, right?
Well, yes, it would be the twenty first because pay period would end on the twentieth then.
February twenty first is the start date.
Yes.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All the same sign? Then we have the carryover of hours. Only carryover a maximum of a hundred and sixty hours into the next month, have to employ his maximum of eighty hours.
That one I would suggest we'd push out until, you know, at least April first, probably just to give people time to use anything that they have over a hundred and sixty.
Is that enough time?
Right, it would be close.
I mean, they are accruing. Yeah.
If they're at a hundred and sixty, and I've had a lot of people that think one sixty is, it's always they're willing to go. And so there's a lot of that one sixty. So yeah, give them a couple of months to plan a week off to get their balance down.
I know you've got one, I'm sure.
Yes, and then, and when you accrue at thirteen plus per month, it starts, it does start to add up. So I think a little bit of time is absolutely necessary. And I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be opposed of extending it beyond April first, but I think at least April first.
So we worded any hours over the maximum will be forfeited after April first of the following year? No, you.
No, we're just talking, like it, it would be monthly. They would forfeit monthly. We're just talking about when we want to start this.
They forfeit every month.
Because we do have some people now that are over a hundred and sixty, even though it's the very first part of the year. Some of them carried over a hundred and sixty and then they've earned some and haven't used it yet, so.
This puts us in like, you know, with, with.
Yeah.
So just thinking a little bit, like when we're trying to pick the implementation date. Brainstorming, like are there any spots where we wouldn't want a bunch of people taking a week off before, I don't know what. One sense I would think, well, maybe let's kick it back to, to June first, and then that gives you all the way till school's out if they want to try to do a, like a week vacation. Or maybe that's just gonna have a whole bunch of people taking a week vacation right in the. There you go, they can. Good point. Good point.
Yeah.
Alright, well.
And the quicker we implement it, the faster they're gonna make that decision and get used to it.
Well, I, I moved to approve the revision, um, uh, to the carryover. Pay need carryover rules with an implementation date of April first.
Got a motion. Second, I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion passes. Okay, the next, the next one though.
That would be the six month.
Every six months waiting period. So we were talking, they can start accruing right away. But won't get paid out until what, after a year's worth of?
Yeah, I like a year. I think encouraging people to, to stay on for a year and not paying them like. Paying them out a bonus for quitting in less than a year is a good move.
A motion?
Yes, that's a motion actually.
So what, what would the rate be on that first? Well, it's eight hours a month is what they start at. For the first, what'd you say?
First five years.
Yeah.
So I would just, yeah, just remove that whole first line and just say up to five years.
Yep.
So they, and they can use it in that timeframe too?
Yes.
And then if they leave, they just wouldn't get paid out if they leave prior to a year of employment.
If they have a day of vacation, they can take.
Yeah.
And then down below when we say employees resigning, good standing, well, a lot of bottom employees have resigned in less than one year.
Motion in, did somebody second that? Second? Any further discussion? Jeffrey.
Jeffrey, okay.
So hearing.
And will that start, when will that start? April first, okay.
Do we, or would we just implement that March first? Or February? We can implement that February first, can't we?
You gotta.
Why not? We've already got two separate dates. Should, should we have it aligned with the beginning of the, the change to the new payrolls like?
Well, they're not, they're not gonna.
As someone with a new person in my office today, I would be in favor of effective immediately. You also have to think of when Michael's got his starting. When Carrie's gonna have her new person starting. His extension off his hourly or salary.
That's right.
But they're gonna recruit the same way.
Yeah, so I would revise that to start tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
A motion in a second. So exactly what is the motion?
I think I've got it. Um, no waiting period for accruing or using vacation time. But no payout upon leaving employment until they have had at least a year of employment.
And I suppose there should be a clarification. There has to be employees that have been here between zero and six months that's clarifying that they will also begin accruing vacation effective tomorrow. Yes, yeah, so I move with that amendment.
Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose same sign, motion passes.
Um, so then, going back to discussing the payroll every two weeks, should I? Survey employees again? Should we discuss it at a department head meeting? Like, what do you think the steps that, I mean, what are? What do you want me to do with that?
I think maybe we should get the other system run smoothly first. I mean, I guess you could do a survey if you want, but. Maybe we should get everybody, you know, running smoothly and.
On the clocking in and out and all of that, yeah.
Make sure that's going smoothly, cause we don't wanna throw too much.
Sure.
Sucks.
Or maybe I don't send out a survey until, you know, a few months from now.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Just out of curiosity, would it? Give them the option? If somebody wants to be paid every two weeks or once a month?
I think we just make it a policy across the board because otherwise it gets kinda, it's kinda sticky. Then you've got to keep track of who's, who's getting paid twice a month and who's not, because there's. Nothing that really.
The actual PayLasti software.
Yeah.
How many options there are.
Yeah, I don't think it really differentiates. I mean, you could manually do it, but then that's, that's a process keeping track manually and there's always that chance of. Or missing somebody, you know, and. I hate to do that too, so.
I just know. My payroll to. Payroll's so easy now. Click the button.
Yeah, I mean, PayLasti is so much easier. I was just on the phone with Turner County the other day because they're switching software to the same things that we are. And she was very concerned with her first payroll coming up with PayLasti. And I was like, you know, you guys are just gonna find that it is so much easier. It's just. Takes away the, a lot of the manual stuff. Although she, she told me they have five different budgets for their sheriff's office and I was just like, what? Cause they have four cities that they contract with and they track the payroll separately for all of those. I'm like, oh no, our contract is so easy. So, anyway.
Department monthly reports, if we get to see those. Any questions on them? Lake County Park, anything?
Um, we, I, I did want to share that we had our. End of the year, uh, where we had our annual meeting and. Got some exciting stuff coming up this year. And they, uh, the, the Clay County Park Board is excited about the, the possibility of. The, uh, MNRR access grant, uh, funds, helping them with their long-term planning, uh, as is Shane Birch with. With Game Fish and Parks. And I wanted to make sure that I shared. The visitation and camping unit numbers. So last year was a real improvement on the previous year. So our visitation and our reservation numbers were both up, um, at the annual meeting that made it last year. And this year, we're up again. Um, so we're up, uh, so the total reservations in twenty twenty four were two thousand seventy seven. That's five point three percent up from the previous year. And the visitation numbers for twenty twenty four were ninety five thousand six hundred and seventy nine. Which is up six point six percent for the previous year as well. So, um, I think that especially with this kind of trend of continued growth. Um, with every public access area, there is such a thing as too much, you know? Who knows how far out that is? And so one of the areas where, um, I think that, um, I'm hopeful for, uh, that we'll get some good proposals and be able to use. Uh, some of that, uh, flat grant money to do some long-term planning on this. And one of the things that I would hope would be maybe some of that could do some visitor use planning. Um, that's like a methodology of, of looking at what, what did this current infrastructure support? What sort of improvements the infrastructure will be needed if you, if you increase usage to certain amounts and kind of trying to hone in on what exactly is the right. Um, right amount of us, usage to shoot for, and then that helps guide, um, our infrastructure, um, improvements out there and also our marketing. You know, if we're already getting close to the maximum amount we want to be, be handling there, then that we're gonna dial down on, uh, marketing. I don't think that's where we're at now. But there is a point, if we continue growth and growth and growth each year, where, um, where we could get there. So that's, uh, so I'm excited about it. And I think, uh, the park's doing great. Park board's great to work with, so.
And then the MR, MNRR access project.
So I put that on the agenda. After meeting and, uh, talking to Dave a little bit last week, and I appreciated it. I, I thought it was a good suggestion. There's been, you know, we've had three different grant cycles, the raise and then the flap and then the raise. Each was slightly different projects. And then following the approval of the flap grant, we had a reduction in the scope of work from. The scope of work that was proposed in the flap grant that got a unanimous vote of support here. So it's actually. A smaller footprint that we're gonna be looking at. Um, and so it seemed like it could be helpful to the community to, um, have a public. Information meeting. Um, I would be happy to host that. Um, I could look for a time that would be available at the library. Um, and invite the public, you know, I've got my list of folks that have come to some of our meetings to make comments and I could reach out to them and make sure that they could come down. And we could, you know, look at what's in the RFP. It would specifically be an informational meeting about what is in the request for proposals. Um, and then I thought that a, a nice, you know, an ask that we could put to anybody who came there would be. When we receive proposals and we're reviewing them, we're gonna score them, uh, and we're gonna, you know. Way different things when we're considering which is the strongest proposal. So it seemed like an opportunity, maybe we could present to the public to allow them to. Provide input on what they thought were the most important things to consider when we're looking at proposals. So, so that was the notion. I. You know, with the, with the RFP closing date of February twentieth, we probably want to do it. Soonish, like in maybe the next, maybe next week, maybe the following week. Um, another idea that I had, as I was having my coffee this morning, was this could also be an opportunity for. Uh, some of the engineering firms to hear, uh, you know, what sort of things are we considering? Um, and so, or maybe present, present questions if they had them. So it could be something we could reach out to the engineering firms if we've already. They already might be working on proposals and, uh, and let them know that we're gonna have this. And if they want to zoom in or something like that, or send a representative down to. To hear what the public input is that might be useful. Anyway, I thought they'd thrown that out there and see if others were interested.
Public information. You know, advertise it.
So is something like an evening meeting, like an after five, make more sense to people? I was thinking probably something like five or six PM at the library or something is often something people can make it to if they have. They work regular hours. Does that seem appropriate to others? So if so, then I would probably just look for a time that's available for that large meeting room and, uh. And I could, uh. Send that around.
Yeah, I wouldn't put it before six.
Yep. Do you think seven's better? Easier to get tougher in people before they come down or? So a seven, so look for a seven PM, you know, I looked at a few dates, uh, it looks like I would be available. On February fourth, February sixth, February seventh. You know, any, any of those would be possibilities for me. Um, the following week, I also would have some availability to be, so. I could look at, look at those first and see if any of them are available at the library unless people think it's better to push back another week. I thought if we could pick a day, either today or tomorrow, then we'd be able to, uh, get something in the paper by the Wednesday deadline if we wanted to advertise it in the paper.
Yeah, I think, I think the fourth might be a little quick. I'm, I'm more open on the week of the tenth.
Okay. Monday wouldn't be great. Wednesday isn't great for me, but that. Thursday would be an option, the Tuesday would be an option too, so.
Thursday looks good.
For me. Thursday?
So what's Tuesday then? Tuesday is good.
Tuesday, the eleventh? A lot of people like going to those basketball games.
I'd hate to see anybody miss out.
Alright, so I'm gonna see if I can get the library room reserved for seven PM on February eleventh. And if I can't, I will look for another time around then. And, uh, it's, can I, can I send that out to? The people, is that? And is that something everybody would like to attend or? Yeah, okay. That'd be great.
You can run it.
You can sit in the hot seat, Jeff, and like, okay, that sounds great.
It's not super, um, you know, mobile friendly, but it looks to me like that, the big Cozak room should be open.
Okay.
Oh wait, that's the twelfth. Eleventh, right?
Yeah.
It's reserved.
At seven PM?
Yeah. Reserved at five thirty until closing.
I, I could do the twelfth. I could do the twelfth.
Yep.
And the twelfth is open, so.
Yeah, seven PM on the twelfth.
Whatever, if it works, it works.
Well, or Friday?
That's Valentine's.
That's Valentine's Day.
So yeah, I'm available. So, yeah, I'm available.
I actually.
Bring your wives.
Thursday, the thirteenth is open too, so.
If it's, if it works, it works, it's good.
See what you can get, Jeff.
Okay. All right. Do the eleventh, twelfth or thirteenth, but probably not the eleventh.
Andy, do we have anything to really?
They gave us a, uh, completed completion date.
No, cause I don't wanna, I don't want anybody holding us to that date. Cause I, I keep telling them, next February is their contract completion date. But we wouldn't be in until October. I mean, there's, there's five weeks of testing.
So they'll have a project completion date within a, like, two month? Two month lag after that before we get prisoner in there?
They will promise that because they're not.
Yeah, okay.
We're hoping to be fully functional. It's gonna be a longer walk for them once you release them.
We've utilized this building project update to also discuss kind of projects here. Um, and so I feel comfortable giving, I, I've spoken specifically with Dick Strasberg from Tegra, um, as well as Tyler Klett, as an associate for Tegra, regarding some of the improvements here and the projects that are gonna be following the move of Lawn Fortune over to the new building, um, he's put together a really nice design build, um, proposal for the county to use on this project, the courthouse, whether their courtroom re- renovation, that's gonna likely be also this fall or winter timeframe. Um, I had a twenty-minute or thirty, thirty-five thirty-minute conversation with, with Dick and with Tyler la- last week, and, um, I think that Dick has traditionally used, hasn't used design build in South Dakota, uh, because it's been the, the laws that South Dakota utilizes to implement design build has been a lot different than the, the laws that he's utilized in other states, but he's put in the time and effort and energy into figuring it out, this is all part of that five thousand dollars that we paid Tegra to kind of be on board with us to figure the, this project out, um. So I can bring some of that information to the commission, I can, I can share that with you for next meeting, I wanted to kind of jump on it a little more and kind of make sure I felt comfortable, I think ultimately I'm gonna probably, I think it'd be wise to request either Tyler or Dick make themselves available. I talked to Tyler, he's in Sioux Falls, but I said I think you could appear via Zoom for a meeting. Um, probably makes sense to do that, I don't know how, you know, we're not quite there yet, but it seems like the sooner we start that project or conversations, probably the better we're gonna be, cause we're gonna need to solicit bids and go through that whole process, so. Um, I can provide something a little better for next week, but I wanted to give you an update, that's also in the works, and Tegra is kind of back working that again now too.
And this will be a template that we can use going down, you know, further down the road, as long as state law doesn't change.
Right, okay. Yeah, and then the benefit is the contract, whereas it's contract manager at risk, it's the alternative, and it just requires a lot more of having an architect, having an engineer, this design build allows them to kind of get to work on that front. Theoretically, it'd be a little cheaper, uh, for the county, and it's the smaller projects, right, we're not building a multimillion dollar for some uh, facility here, we're talking about just taking some walls out and, you know, some of the models, um, this is probably more appropriate way to, to do this, at least cost effectively, um, and, and I really appreciate Dick putting in the time to figure out how to do this, uh, because it, it took him and Tyler, I think, a lot of time, it does, it gives them a template also for servicing other counties and municipalities, but, um, you know, they had to kind of bunker down and do the work here, and I know they spent a lot of time.
Anything for John, yours that you did? Any other commissioner reports?
They do have a new board now, Katie Hines, the new president. Chasing poor clubs fundraiser throughout, and that's kind of why the push was on to get a new hire, the job is now posted for Raymond's position. Stay everybody involved, helping that out. Be talking a little bit more about the workers comp issue.
Anybody else?
Um, just a, just a quick one, uh, I, uh, on Friday, I went up to, uh, Sioux Falls to have an orientation for CCOG, get met with, um, uh, Lynn Cohen Forbes and Sophie Johnson and Sean Heckey, uh, and, uh, the, the, the takeaway I wanted to bring back here was that they feel that we should utilize their services more, so I, I, in the past, I have, uh, I've worried a little bit that we lean on them too heavily for the twelve thousand dollars a year we spend on it, and, uh, actually, they communicated the opposite, that they, uh, they want to do more for us, they, they feel like municipalities get a little bit of a, a cushy break, um, that the county sometimes, uh, subsidize the municipalities within the county a little bit with their dues, so they, they encourage us to use them more, so I talked a little bit about what that could look like, um, I had a meeting with Brent a little bit earlier in the week, and I think that, you know, primarily a focus for me would be to, um, through CCOG, just try to identify, uh, highway department grants especially, so first identify projects, have Brent projects that might be beyond the scope of what we wanna have come out of our general fund, and, uh, and then, uh, utilize CCOG to try to help locate grants that would, uh, that would support those projects and, uh, so, um, another thing that they, uh, they offered, um, was that they often do the, uh, the annual bridge survey that's required for the big grants, they do annual updates for a lot of counties, and, and just have like a really nice template for it, so, um, just could maybe take a little bit of work off of the, the local, uh, every department's office, basically, they just, you know, have the information, hand it off to them, and then they format it real nicely, they call the apps, so they've got some G I S professionals in-house that can do all the maps for us without us having to do anything, and that's all included with interviews already, so.
Did have a plank, it's only class night. Gentleman. Forty-six there, right at the county, up there by Truck House, Ash Creek. Sounds like it, he's got planned, it'd be, uh, talking about nineteen building, site out, he's going, he's going. Just waiting to maybe do some rezoning instead of building. That's probably the case. Be some pretty nice properties, I think, for some tax base.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Do you have anything for executive session, anybody? Alright, did motion adjourn? I can give an update on the contract.
Okay.
Stick a minute.
I have nothing. Yep, so I, uh, move that we enter executive for contractual.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, we're in executive session.
I second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye? All the same sign, motion passes, we're in regular session.
My head hurts.
I just have one, uh, I was wondering if, uh, so, um, the elevator funding, uh, loan application, did you get that together?
No, we gotta work on that.
Okay, all right, and I was thinking that that might be a good one to have, like, uh, I just wanna make sure that I know, like, what all the terms are and everything, so that I understand exactly what, what county's liability is, how it relates to tax revenue, what's expected to give, or something like that, so. Just something for next, next agenda, maybe, if that's, if people are comfortable with that, so, we might have to do some of it in executive, or we might have to do some of it in open. And if not, the next, if it's not ready by the next meeting, but just like, get it on the agenda after you guys have something.
Okay, Dave, you still got the motion to adjourn? Is that what you did? Or who did?
Motion adjourn.
And, uh, yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.